Loved it and then came here and it was like, um, I, I put it to that feeling of when you walk on the college campus and you know, this is where I'm meant to be.
Yeah.
It immediately felt like home. And we got back to, um, the Pacific Northwest where it was raining and cold and dark. Um, and I, I adored living there, but, but really, uh, this is home for us. And, um, you know, when, you know, I, I was a, a teacher and, and knowing that, you know, it would take some time for my license to kick over, but really could teach anywhere. It's an amazing profession.
Yeah.
Um, and really the issue was with, with my husband's work situation and his boss went within five seconds of him saying, we're, we're thinking of moving to the Raleigh area. It was, um, you can work remotely. So then, you know, within four months, we had packed up our house and moved to Apex and haven't looked back. You know, we've gone back to visit and it's a, it's a wonderful area, but really, I mean, this is a, a place like no other.
Yeah.
So, um, but we have three girls that are all in schools and, um, I got involved in the school board, um, back when I was teaching, I was a part of our school's self-study. So in a self-study, you get to see, you know, those things that, that go outside of the school to make what I was able to do in the classroom a possibility. Um, looking at our budget, making sure it fit in with our mission and values, um, looking at our facilities. And so when it came time to run, I had been substitute teaching. I think if I had been in my own classroom, that wouldn't have been a, a possibility. I wouldn't have thought of leaving, but, um, it's been, it's been amazing to, um, hear from so many phenomenal teachers, so many parents, people who come from, from all different backgrounds, um, in our public schools. And so really trying to make the best decisions with what we have, um, that are best for our students and the people that care for our students. It's, it's been, uh, four years now. So, yeah.
When, when were you first selected? Was that?
2016.
Wow, four years, really has.
Yeah.
I think you and I met at the, I think the first time we met.
That was the second time.
Pick picking, yeah. It was around that and we met at a, so, uh, for those of you, you don't know, I was the vice chair and then the chair of the Raleigh Regional Association of Realtors, um, uh, government affairs committee. And so we got to meet during that time. I still am, I'm on the committee, but we get to meet a lot of folks from across the municipalities and the school board in that, um, just from educational events where people come in and other things like the political pick picking, which is sort of the big event each fall and each political season, uh, before the elections, uh, to hear from folks. But, uh, it was great to connect with you then. And I just want to clue, keep people in real quick as to like, why we're talking today? Because there are really big issues coming together right now.
Massive.
Massive, right? And I mean, we've been through our, you know, school, like, you know, reassignments and those are often big for particular geographic areas.
Absolutely.
But this is something that affects all hundred plus thousand students and fan, their families across Wake County.
Yeah.
And it's not unique to Wake County by any means. I think every school district in the country is dealing with this. So we invited you on, uh, you know, we engaged a little bit the other day and just thought it would be great for people to hear from you really what, you know, what, we're hearing different things, like it may be 50% capacity in some way, maximum classroom levels, maybe alternating schedules. And yet as some dialogue, as you go, if you scratch beyond the surface there, there's all of these other questions that come to bear. Sports banned, whoa, how do those happen? You know, kids, families where they have kids on IEPs and how might they be supported? Kids, so many students that are on free and reduced lunch. How do we support them? How do we support working families that have kids from home with kindergarteners and learning from home? It's the breadth of just the initial feedback from neighbors that I'm hearing. And I love your insight into, you know, just sort of, that's a big, a big intro for you, but.
Yeah, no.
We're not into in the next few minutes.
You know, we, if you would have asked any of us, I think, you know, six months ago, um, what would school look like if you had to massively change it like that?
Yeah.
We would, you know, it, it's, it was unfathomable. And I think, you know, it, every aspect of our lives because of COVID, because of this pandemic has become so different. Um, I have a friend who, when I ask how she is, she'll say pandemic fine. Cause really there, there's no.
Big asterisk on that.
Right, right. And so, um, you know, a, as many folks know, on March 13th, um, on March 12th, we thought we were going back to school. It was a Friday. And I will tell you that week was, was just uh, the amount of communication between our, our central office and, and the governors and office, um, uh, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, which I'll be probably be saying DHHS, um, trying to, to figure out what, what were we dealing with, what was happening? Um, and to the point where we thought we would be going back on Monday and overnight it became very clear that that was not going to be the case. And so Wake County Public Schools was able to shift spring break to give us some time.
Yeah.
To look into it. And, and within a couple of hours, the governor just said, everybody's done, um, at, with in-person instruction at the school level. And I cannot thank enough our teachers, our parents, our, 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 our families, our caregivers, um, who really stepped in and gave so much grace and flexibility during this past time of remote learning. I mean, I have a teaching degree and, and with my own three children, it was,
Yeah.
There were some moments, like it was not, right? And so, um,
If I can just jump in real quick.
Yeah.
I think we so deeply share your gratitude with the teachers, administrators, staff, parents, community leaders and how we wrestle with it. And the school board members too. I mean, that is often a, uh, you know, it's a, I'm not gonna say thankless job, but it's a, it's a, you held really tough decisions in budgeting, in decisions. And I, you know, I know Bill Fletcher as well on the board. Um, we've been colleagues for years and it's just a really big responsibility and with no easy answers. And that's what I've heard again and again and again. It's like, wow, to be in the position to make that, there are no easy, easy answers in this.
I mean, I'd love some easy answers. I really would. Just one, just one. Um, but you know, I mean, as a, as a school board in, and as a school district in North Carolina, um, you know, in general, you know, I grew up in New York state and lived in Washington state. Um, I don't have taxing authority. Um, we get our funding from the state. Um, and that's pretty fixed by the general assembly. Um, we are very fortunate in Wake County where we have county commissioners who are able to leverage property tax to help supplement that state funding. Um, they're also constitutionally, um, required to, to help with our building program, to fund our building program. And although we have control over the design and, and the scheduling, we work really in conjunction with the county because they are our bankers for that. And we have been able to, to build and, and remodel um, many, many of our schools because of that. And, and we know that there are some that are, that are still in need of, of additional love um, i- in, in terms of remodel, but where we formulated a plan where we're able to start catching up on that. So it's not bond after bond after bond. And depending on how the economy is, people just say, we can't.
And you know, that Wake County is that when those bonds have come up, they have passed with such strength.
Over the past, yeah, yeah.
I, I moved to North Carolina in 2012 and, you know, the show of support in Wake County has been so strong. I think in this area, people deeply understand both the growth that we're facing, we need that and equity issues within older schools and in different communities within Wake County and just the value that's placed on public education. I mean, I think Wake County, you know, strives to be a leader in the Southeast in how we address public education.
And we still know, sorry.
Yep.
We still know that we're, you know, we're, we're low when it comes to teacher pay. We're low when it comes to, to principal pay and, and our, our per pupil spending. And so we have to, you know, I, I am constantly in awe of what we're able to do with, when you look at that average per pupil expenditure and we're, we're down there. Um, but we can always do more and we can always, you know, I mean, we have to, we have to do more. But getting back to where we are today.
Yeah.
Um, you know, our first concern with is, you know, for kids who rely on us for, for free, for, for their two meals, whether it's breakfast and lunch or just lunch. Um, and the, the community came together and we have, um, food sites all over. And I can't even begin to name how many there are. Um, and, uh, but more and more coming and more and more, you know, grew as, as we realized how, how much we would need this throughout the county. We have buses going to, to places where maybe folks can't get to one of the sites to deliver food. Um, we had to get, you know, when we talk about equity, you know, we have areas in, in Wake County where, you know, broadband is not easily accessible. Um, whether it's because, uh, folks can't afford it, or it's just not available because it's a very rural area. And, and in Western Wake County, um, you know, we know those, those areas are, are fewer and further between than, than, um, they were before. But, um, you know, we have a lot of, of, you know, very rural areas still. And so making sure that we could get laptops to people who need it, even if you, you know, only have one laptop for work, we were able to get parents to, to get a laptop that would work for their children in a hotspot as well. Um,
Which for video instruction, like even if you're using mobile hotspots, like not necessarily unlimited data plan. That's, there's so many hurdles for that at-home instruction that
Mm-hmm.
Come through, you know. Well, I'd love to dive in to, you know, really getting to the specifics of sort of the decision-making process. We know that we're expecting to hear from the governor around July 1st with a plan. And even just, you know, I'd love to hear your thoughts at sort of that 40,000 foot level, you know, what, what are the big considerations that are going on right now in the decision-making process?
All of them. Um, so we, we were really, you know, trying to, we have a core team working on, um, what school would look like, but really it wasn't until a couple of weeks ago that we first received this guidance, um, which is available on the Department of Health and Human Services, um, website. So we needed guidance from the Department of Health and Human Services as to what was required. And that's where we, we first were introduced to, uh, the need for schools to have three different plans in place depending on where our numbers were. Um, and so Plan A is a, a, a little more school as normal, what we're used to. Um, but with, you know, social distancing measures and different requirements, and it's all listed in here. So I'm not going to go through all of them. Um, and then Plan C, which is schools are, are shut down and we're in remote instruction only. Um, and we know full well as a district that remote instruction has to be much more intentional and consistent than, um, what we saw, you know, this, this past semester when you know, everything changed. Um, and then we have additional guidance and this is massive from the FBI. Yes.
To that last point in particular about how it was in the spring, you know, we had three kids in Wake County Public School kindergarten. Last year they were in kindergarten, fourth grade and sixth grade. Our gut sense was, you know, I don't think my sixth grader logged into a classroom instruction once. She had her assignments and emailed if she had some questions, but largely just got her work done, like a large homework assignments each week. My fourth grader had a half hour call a week or so. Um, and then was hit or miss on how she did. And then the kindergartner had like a morning meeting essentially. Um, and it was such a varied amount of contact there. And, and it that, that was a plan and they made it through it and that they did well. And I'm just trying to think through like, you know, what might that look like differently in the fall if it was, if there is at-home instruction?
Well, we have, so every board member has a board advisory council, which includes an administrator and a parent from, from every school in their district and, and having 30 schools in my district. It's usually a pretty good, um, set of, of folks. And we had over 230 parents that came, um, to, to ask, you know, to respond to questions from the core team regarding, um, what next year could possibly be. Um, and overall, you know, from that group, we heard, you know, consistency and communication were the biggest topics, consistency. You know, if you're going to have a plan, let's, let's not, you know, have to do like a 180 and say, well, we, here's your plan A, but we had to tweak it in the middle. Um, which, you know, we will need some flexibility within those plans, but, but people need to plan and it's hard to plan during this time. So, um, but those are the big things is, is, you know, making sure that we have consistency. And we've heard that over and over again. And um, we also know that there are families who do not want to send their, their students to schools because maybe their student is immunocompromised or someone in their, their immediate family or their caregiver is immunocompromised. And so, um, as a board, we've given a thumbs up to have a Wake County Virtual Academy. We've looked at, um, you know, NCVPS and, and they just don't have room for all of us. Um, folks in Wake County were quite large with over 160,000 students. So, um, it, and, um, and so making sure that we have something available for those families that, you know, so that we can, can still meet the state standards that we're required to do, but have an option for families that, that just don't feel comfortable going back in the building. And, and that goes for teachers as well.
Great. So from a decision-making process, it sounds like you have the DHHS guidelines of three different plans. And then, so what my, what are you expecting to hear on July 1st? Or what is the scope of the, of the information that would be shared by the governor on July 1st?
That is a great question.
Is it as simple as like, are we going to phase three or not? Or I mean, just before we got on, I got an alert from WRIL that today was the second highest number of new cases, I think it was. I mean, it's just, the last two weeks has been trending, not the direction we were hoping for, even to make it to phase three, let alone a school year.
So, yeah, it's, you know, I mean, it is, the numbers are, are going to dictate where we are. Um, you know, DHHS has put out the three Ws. They are, they're out there. I think we, we've got them all memorized at this point. Um, Governor Cooper said he would make a decision on school when it comes to, you know, when it comes to schools on Ju- July 1. I don't have the answer as to what that might look like. I would say my personal assumption would be whether or not we are opening, we should plan to open on A, B, or C. But again, it's the governor who's going to decide in conjunction with Dr. Cohen and her team, what plan, um, we're implementing and when we're, we would be phasing into, um, you know, from A to B, B to C, or, or, you know, going in the other direction as well. Um, so I really don't know, but I, you know, i- if he wants to call me and tell me, I'd love that. So, um, but you know, within that.
What you mean though then is you're working on the A, B, and C plans.
Yes.
Kind of the work of the staff and, and ultimately what will the board playing and helping to, to work in cooperation with the staff on that?
Yeah. So, I mean, um, we've had now, um, we have work sessions and these, these work sessions are available. I mean, please, if anybody wants to, you know, our last one, I, we just got off of it was three hours, um, because this really is important work to know. Um, and so the staff is figuring out what Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C will look like. And we have to have these plans in place, um, and submitted, um, by a certain date. And so our next, uh, work session will be on June 30th. Um, the time's still being set. We're thinking it'll be around two. But, um, within the past couple of days, we've talked about, you know, the eight, what, and, and our, our previous work session last week, what are the facilities implications of this? The, the, the transportation implications of, um, each plan. Um, what does this look like? Today we've heard from, um, our, our one school nurse that the district employs, our, our school nurses that are in the schools are employed by the county. Um, what the guidance is suggesting for or requiring for our schools, um, and you know, how are, what is that going to look like when kids go to get on the bus or come into a school? Um, we've heard from HR, we've heard from academics several times. Um, so for folks who really want to know, please go back and look at those work sessions. They are live streamed and then later archived on, uh, Wake County Public School System's YouTube channel. Um, because it really is, uh, there's so much detail for all of this work. Um,
So maybe we could hit a couple of topics just, like, at a highlight. Let's take this, and this may, may or may not work for you, but uh, we saw a scenario where they talked about parent feedback was, that I posted yesterday, was this idea of like doing an alternating one week on, one week off, or two weeks on, two weeks off, four weeks on, four. I'm not gonna say off, that's probably the wrong word. Four weeks in the school, four weeks school from home.
Face-to-face, uh, instruction and online instruction are the, are the terms that we're trying to, to norm with it.
Yeah. And I think that's just it. Like even starting there, like the number of people and it's like home online instruction. There's all these talks about, you know, well, will YMCA camps, like how do we support dual working families? And in those types of scenarios and trying to figure, just trying to figure that out of the home online instruction, um, where that's going to affect a large, I would imagine probably 40 to 60% of families that would be figuring out how to manage that with elementary school age kids in particular would be, would be an interesting challenge, to say the least.
I, I think challenge is a very kind word. Um, so we heard, um, today kind of where we are, you know, we, we do have limitations when it comes to, to transportation. And we are required by the Department of Public Instruction to have our instructional hours in. Um, we're required every year, whether you're in multi-track year round, single track year round, modified, um, early college or traditional calendar schools, you have to have a minimum of 1,025 instructional hours. So when you are not in a face-to-face instruction environment or an online-only environment, um, and it's your, your off time or out of the building time during blended, um, that Plan B blended piece where we're at 50% capacity. Um, we just heard today in our work session that, um, we've been in communication with the YMCA being one of the largest childcare providers in the county. Um, so that they can structure, um, camps and, and really not camps, but this help facilitate that online learning for parents who have to go back to school. And we were told that, um, I specifically asked the question, and if there are, you know, camp, summer camp or trackout camp providers or other childcare providers, because they have their own set of, of guidelines from the Department of Health and Human Services, they're required to follow. Um, how, how would they be able to access and be a part of that conversation or opt in to, to be one of those folks? Um, and we heard back from, from our, our person who had been liaising with the Y is contact the Y and, um, cause they're really taking the lead on that and, and being our point person on that. So if there are folks, um, who either run a, a, a camp or a childcare center or a, a, a person who, who relies on a childcare center, you know, reach out, um, cause this really is going to be a community lift um, and all of it. And, and we need those partners in the community.
160,000 kids. I mean, I'm just thinking, yeah, there's like seven Ys. The numbers are staggering when you look at it holistically like that. And, uh, it's really just, you know, the skip, scope and scale of this is, is just really big. Um, so I, I think these are.
Yeah. Oh, I was gonna say, but our, our smaller districts, there are 115 school districts in North Carolina. And, you know, this is impacting every single one of them be so, you know, we can, we can say, well, this county is large, this county is large. But even if we were in a smaller county, we would be having a lot of the, the issues um, that we're seeing in Wake. It's just, you know, we're having to do it for over 190 buildings.
Yeah. Wow. Um, another question that came up was the idea of IEPs, um, for virtualized educational plans. Have, have there been conversations about if there might be some differentiation in plans for those students? Or is that in the realm of possibilities?
Well, I mean, you know, this, this is a topic that, that I've gotten a lot of, of emails about. And I've had a lot of conversations with folks in the district about. And and it, it's one of those that where the scope and scale of it is one where you have to be intentional and you have to be detailed and you have to recognize the individuality of each IEP. And I know as, as a parent who has a kid on an IEP, we're waiting for that information. Um, and I have been told that that is being done, but I also know that, that it seems like, oh, well, she's just saying that. But, um, no, it was on a list of things that we're going to be talking about, um, in the next coming, coming weeks, because it is a really, you know, as a public school system, we have a, a, a duty to, to teach everyone in the way that they learn. And so, um, you know, whether it's, you know, through a 504 or an IEP, we have to make sure that that is happening. And so, um, right now, what I can say is, is those conversations have been going from, from the jump really. Um, but it's, it's making sure we're looking at the guidance from the federal government, the state government and, and, and putting everything in there. So, um, it, I don't have a, a, a more detailed answer than that, unfortunately. And I'm feeling that as, as a parent.
I can imagine. Yeah. So, um, we're hitting that half hour, magic half hour point. I'm so appreciative of your time, Lindsay. And I guess I, I wanted to go out with you. It, you know, if there was sort of a, a lasting thought or, or question or perspective, you'd want, you wish that you could share with people and sort of have them hold on to over this next two to three months as we lean into this new school year and this new kind of semi-permanent normal, you know, what are some thoughts? What's a thought or a couple of thoughts you want people to hold on to?
Um, for me, the, the biggest thing is the only certainty during this time is uncertainty, um, because we are in an uncharted territory. And, um, I'm holding the, the tenants that I heard at my BAC of consistency and communication. Um, that, that same survey that you cited, you know, showed that parents, we can't over-communicate enough. But we want the communication to maybe not be from, you know, seesaw remind, uh, you know, uh, go to my website, go to my Twitter feed, you know, check my Google classroom, you know, making it a consistent form of communication and really making sure that we're pushing that communication out to families so that they're aware instead of saying, oh, well, you can look on our website for it. No, we need to make sure we're proactively communicating. Um, and, and that's, you know, for some people it'll be too much. For some people it won't be enough. And so we're really, we're having to find, you know, balance in a time of uncertainty, which is really hard.
Yeah.
Um, but, but continuing to, to, um, engage and, you know, it, I wish I had a time machine to tell you what it was going to be like, but by the time I got back, it would probably be wrong.
Yeah.
Um, and so we're, we're, we're trying to do the best we can with what we have, but it's, it's going to be way different than our expectations. And, um, we're, we're going to have to consider constantly shift our expectations for this. consider constantly shift our expectations for this.
You know, I, I love that idea of like just, as sort of like a mantra or affirmation, some of that idea of being ten, seeking to be ten percent more patient than I am, you know, of just being able to, you know, uh, keep my elastic, my, you know, your rubber band elastic on this as opposed to getting so taught that there's no more give. Um, and I think that's so important within our own, from our family level to our neighborhood level, to our school district, to just sort of understanding and giving grace to, you know, our leaders who have these difficult decisions. And for that, Lindsay, I'm just, I know I speak for so many people. Thank you for the care and, and you know, leadership that you bring in representing the staff and the kids and the families of, of your district in Wake County. So thank you, Lindsay. I really appreciate your time joining us today.
Thank you for having me. Um, you know, this is so different from anything that we ever thought could happen. And, and it's a- as much as I can, can help, you know, share what we're doing at the board level, I'm, I'm happy to. So thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay.
All right.
All right. Good luck this next few weeks.
Thanks.
See how it all evolves. Have a great day.
Thanks you as well.
Bye.
Bye.